I'd like to take time to do the roll call before I do the placement at this time.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mom?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
And Mayor Neely.
Here. You all please join me in the placement.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now's the time we go into a special ceremony, proclamations. We have a presentation from the National Park Service and Tracy Fortman, Superintendent at Fort Vancouver National Historic Site, I think is going to make the presentation.
Yes, Scott?
Do you want to come for that?
(laughing).
To those that may not know, the McLaughlin House across the street over here is actually under the National Park Service and is under Fort Vancouver's administration. Let Tracy introduce himself and also Heidi, if you would introduce yourself too.
Yeah, I'm Heidi Pearson and I basically do the most...
Can you have the talk in the mic?
Oh.
They're going to get lunch here.
And address the Commission.
Okay. My name's Heidi Pearson and I am the Park Ranger and Museum Specialist who cares for the McLaughlin House and does the day-to-day operations.
And I'm Tracy Fortman. I'm the Superintendent at Fort Vancouver National Historic Site. So I thought it was time for us to bring you up to date on the many things that we've been doing. And actually Heidi, before we start the PowerPoint, we're going to share with you our... At Fort Vancouver, we oversee over 2 million objects in our collections facility and we've done within the collection and the focused on McLaughlin family artifacts, heirlooms. So I thought I would give that to the Commissioners and I believe we have one for the City Manager today. We've also done some of the others. We make these available to different interested parties, school groups and others to give them a sense of the tangible legacy that we have. We're also going to share with you our newsletter. All of this is available on the web. However, I thought it would be nice to give you our newsletter and our 2013 annual report, the Superintendent's Annual Report.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight. I work very closely with Mayor Neely. Doug's certainly a wonderful person to work with with regard to the McLaughlin Memorial Association. I'm honored to have Heidi Pearson as point of contact for this site. She's done a phenomenal job, certainly with city reps such as Scott Archer, who's here tonight. We've worked closely with him and provided assistance as we could to the Erma Tinger House. And we continue to try to partner with that historic home. So I think I'll start with the PowerPoint and this is just to give you a sense of what we've done. As a reminder, the house transferred to the National Park Service by way of US Congress legislation in 2003. This, as I'm sure all of you know, this wonderful jewel here within Oregon City, the McLaughlin House and the Barclay House are situated on the Charter Park. It also speaks to one of the earliest, if not the earliest, preservation movement by a community to protect the McLaughlin House. So there are many, many stories that can be told here. Certainly, we're focusing on, in large part with John McLaughlin and Dr. Barclay, recognizing that in a sense its bookends. John McLaughlin's life as a chief factor was at Fort Vancouver in southwest Washington. He later came here, this was his retirement home. So we work closely with the city of Oregon City, the McLaughlin Memorial Association. Richard Matthews is here tonight, who's the President of the MMA. And we consult with a number of tribes on a regular basis. The Grand Ron, Warm Springs and Celets Indians. I actually do government-to-government with 26 federally recognized tribes that represent those who were buried in Hudson's Bay Company Cemetery at Fort Vancouver. We look to tribes to provide us the input that we need and ensure that we recognize their connection of the indigenous people. So it's very important to us and we do work closely with them here, as well as the Oregon Shippo. Have a very close relationship with the Oregon Shippo, too. So I thought I would share with you the projects that we have undertaken since 2004. I'm going to look to Heidi to fill in the gaps. We've been very busy. I'm going to focus just on projects. Through the Park Service, we seek dollars and we have to compete. And if you think of it, we compete with 401 other national parks. Competition is incredibly fierce. All national parks are tremendously worthy. So we need to put together compelling cases for our projects. And with folks like Heidi here as our Site Manager and other staff, we have been very, very successful. So since 2004, we did a historic structures report for the McLaughlin and the Barclay House. We've done a historic furnishing study. We've done a report for the McLaughlin House and we've also re-roofed the McLaughlin House, as many of you already know. The re-roofing was quite a deal. The roofing was asbestos, so it required a lot of remediation in order to address. We've done historic paint analysis on the McLaughlin and Barclay Houses. Do you want to... We're going to be repainting the Barclay House.
And the McLaughlin House. Both of them.
Both of them. But the Barclay House is... The color is... There's a number of colors. We found out that it's not a pure white color. So we... Looking at the period of significance, you may see a different color. It's hard to see the roof on the McLaughlin House, but that is shakes, right?
That one's shakes and the Barclay House is shingles.
Shingles. During that time period, historic homes had either shakes and/or shingles. And so we felt it was appropriate to convey both of those roofing styles in order for the public to see the differences. We will be... Where are we on our museum management plan at this point? Can you?
That's been done.
Been done?
We have a museum management plan, emergency operations plan, scope of collections. All of those are done.
Okay. And then with regard, we had to upgrade the fire suppression and security systems and we've actually tackled that a number of times, making corrections and ensuring that the structures are sound and protected from a suppression and security standpoint. So conservation of and treatment of objects, it's very, very expensive. Folks like to support collections and perhaps all of us have a little bit of a hoarding mentality. The issue, though, is collecting things and then actually maintaining and treating them are two very, very different things. And I thought maybe you might want to speak about the refinishing and the treatment of Marguerite's sewing cabinet as an example.
Yeah.
Which will be in your... In the little collections book we share with you.
Yeah, that conservation was... The Marguerite sewing cabinet came over in 1837 from China and it's a black lacquer with clay and gold filigree on it. And it took... In order to clean it, she basically took... She used thousands of Q-tips, one at a time. So you just dip the Q-tip on a wet napkin and then you roll it and then you throw it away and take another one. Because you can't reuse them because the dirt acts as an abrasive, especially on lacquer. So that was a particularly difficult conservation project just because of the black lacquer and it had a lot of sun and water damage as well. But we've actually gotten quite a few of the furnishings that are associated with the family conserved in the last few years, which has been great.
That's nice. With regard to emergency stabilization, we have done some emergency work for the foundation of the Barclay House.
Yes.
As well as the McLaughlin Site. And then, of course, for us, it was really important to install subsurface electrical lines to remove the ones that were there. So we've accomplished that, too. So from 2004 to 2013, including repainting and stabilizing the chimneys, which we did this last year.
This year, yeah.
This year. We've expended about $795,000. That does not include my operational costs with regard to, for example, the Site Manager, her program dollars and her salaries, as well as maintenance and our curator and others. So I wanted to give you a sense of how aggressive we have to be, that we need to be and as we should be with regard to the projects. These historic homes are incredibly important. And I've always been enamored with the city of Oregon City. It is... It's just an amazing place. And for us to do justice to what is now part of a national park system, we've been very proactive in trying to make those differences to the buildings. So now I'd like to tell you where we're going. So we're now in fiscal year 2014.
2014.
Yeah. Our fiscal year starts October 1. So '15 is just around the... Yeah, just around the corner. So we're working on the cultural landscape inventory right now. And the Charter Park, as you know, is... Has had many, many...
Lives.
Lives.
Yes.
And so that work, when do you think will be done with the inventory?
That should be done towards the end of the fiscal year. It's... It should be completed by then, as well as the conservation and the assessment and recording of all the outdoor monuments and features. But that will determine a period of significance, taking in all of the different things that that landform has been used for.
And likely, not to jump the gun, but it would not be unlikely that the Victorian era, the early 20th century, will be the landscape that'll be the...
Our significant landscape.
Significant landscape. I think, as you know, monuments erode, the tombstones erode. And if you... Trying to care for them is, again, a very challenging process. So we are doing work with the various monuments and features and treatment. We are, in fact, right now, trying to work on the fountain that's... Has its share of problems, particularly in the past, homeless coming in and dropping stuff in it. Children choosing to put bubble bath in the fountain for a little bit of bubbles. And so we are working on that right now. 2015, we'll be painting the exterior of the Barclay House and we'll be replacing the interior barriers at the McLaughlin House, which is... Are the gates. And those will be more accessible and meet fire codes for...
Yeah. They'll be... Right now, they're locked and they're iron gates. So it'll change to sort of either a magnet lock and plexiglass, something that you can see through more easily. That's going to be less obstructive to seeing the house as a home.
And then the window coverings, that's a key point for us. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
So we'll be getting more historically accurate window coverings, which means the, you know, window treatments. And we'll have blinds so that we can pull the blinds down on a hot sunny day and protect the furnishings from that kind of sun and heat. And it'll help to regulate the temperature as well. And we might... We would probably also have seasonal window coverings during that time period. You would actually change your curtains, winter versus summer. So things like that. And we've been researching historically accurate fabrics and things like that. So that'll really perk up the interiors a lot.
Nice. And in 2016, I'll beat you guys to the punch because I know someone's going to ask me about the paint of the McLaughlin House. We actually did a lot of research and identified what... It was our understanding and contracted a service for a paint that was... We were told would last 30 to 40 years. It certainly was of a special texture that was protective as well as non-toxic and the sort... And the closest to what that paint would have been like, although its durability was supposed to be much stronger. Hey, you know, we all learn. And so that paint has not held up as we might have liked. And certainly, we will be repainting it with a more robust paint in 2016. So I don't want people to be concerned about that. We have basically got that scheduled in to do.
And this time, we don't have to do lead mitigation.
Right. The lead mitigation, as you know, was what took so much time before.
Yes.
Do you want to talk of the structural engineering of the McLaughlin House? If you've been in there, there's a lot of settling, quite frequently cracks and trying to determine how we can best make it seismically protect the structure as well as deal with these cracks.
Yeah, those... That'll help a lot. And then also the gutters and foundation pilings will make it a lot stronger. So that's kind of going to be done in conjunction. And then once that, some other things can be done. So the boiler is pretty old in the basement there, so we'll be replacing that. But we'll still continue to have a boiler and use the radiant heat system. And then upgrading accessibility is a really... That's an exciting one because right now, you do have to go up a couple stairs to get into the house. So it'll be nice to have it be far more accessible to people.
Only accessible, yeah.
And then, once you have the found... You know, the structural things taken care of, we'll be replacing all of the wall and floor coverings and putting in a historically accurate stair rail. And I think that'll...
Also accessible.
That'll really change the look of the inside when you get rid of that brown carpet in there and it'll be amazing. That's all. That's it. That's all our site.
So when you add that up through 2018, that'll be over a million dollars' worth of projects. So I thought it was appropriate to let you know. I think we're doing... I've been committed since the legislation passed in 2003 and I worked with the grassroots efforts here, the city leadership, the MMA and the Shippo's office and others to see the legislation pass for the McLaughlin Site. I do think that this is a wonderful opportunity to have a national park in Oregon City. And although operationally, we are facing difficult times. Operating dollars are not as we might like. So... But I'd also like to say that I've always prided myself, as well as my staff, on being lean and mean and doing as much as possible with limited operating dollars. So moving forward, I'm hoping that we can continue to have a good relationship with Oregon City, as well as look at some partnership opportunities and even seek some potential grant opportunities together to help improve the site. And I've also... Did we hand out the letters?
No.
I do want to do, again, a special recognition to Scott, who we've worked with quite for a number of years since he came. And I'd just like to read a letter of thanks to Mayor Neely and the Commission. It says, "I'd like to acknowledge and thank the city of Oregon City for working in partnership with the National Park Service and Fort Vancouver National Historic Site. The National Park Service and the city of Oregon have a strong, positive partnership. We also have a strong relationship with many of the heritage groups that call Oregon City home. Much of what we do would not be possible without the cooperation and all-out support of our valued partners like Oregon City. We want to express our gratitude on your continued support and cooperation. We hope that you will continue to work with us and stand by our side in this great endeavor to preserve, protect and interpret the McLaughlin House site in perpetuity. Thank you so much for the role that you're playing alongside the National Park Service. Please accept our gratitude for all your support and cooperation to date and we look forward to a continued constructive relationship as we move forward together in the future."
We appreciate your coming out.
Thank you.
Might be some questions. The one that I would pose, of course, is your operating funds are limited and the McLaughlin House, except for special events, I think is only open two days a week.
Correct.
Are there any grants that we could jointly pursue on the operational side of the coin?
Well, we're looking at that now and certainly, we're going to be working in partnership with the MMA. And maybe that's something that we could explore with Scott and other staff to see what might be possible or viable.
Yeah, that's something that we definitely would like to do, is try to get another... At least another day and, you know, to be more accessible to schools as well.
Yes. It's important.
That discussion really needs to be all those partners, I think. Because one of the reasons I'm thinking so is within the next year or so, we will have an Erma Tinger House open, which we absolutely don't want to see in a situation where we have to close it again after restoring the house. And so I definitely think at the city level, we are going to need to have a discussion about how that... How that house is going to operate and what the future of that house is. So I can see the benefits of a partnership working with that between all of those... All the heritage houses, actually, in Oregon City. But I want to thank you. I am saddened that the Erma Tinger House wasn't part of that handover and for many reasons we know. And I appreciate the partnership that has been made to help with the ongoing repairs and future of the Erma Tinger House. But I am so thankful that the McLaughlin House is in the hands of the National Park Service. I think that hopefully, you know, at some day in the future, in my lifetime, the Erma Tinger House will be as well. I think that's the only way that we can guarantee that we protect these sites. And I know that, you know, there was a pass driving by the McLaughlin House where I was concerned that it would, you know, have a shorter lifetime. And now I feel very happy about the future of the McLaughlin House, even though there's concerns about operations. I know that the house is going to be there. I know it's protected. And the amount of work that's gone into that house in the last five years is incredible. So I just... I think... I don't know how many people in Oregon City really know how much work has been done and I appreciate you coming and sharing that because it's... When we drive by, we see the work being done, but to see the list of what has been accomplished is pretty incredible.
I do think Rocky is truthful about that. I don't think everybody understands how much work has been done. So I really appreciate you guys coming out to do that. And I know people are willing to build, but they don't really understand maintenance. So I think the city understands that quite nicely. The maintenance, yes.
Again, thank you. We appreciate the partnership we've had and look forward for it continuing in a very productive way.
And I do want to encourage you to feel comfortable contacting me at any time. And if there's a... In the near future, it's been quite a while since I've been here and I kind of cornered Doug the other day and I said, you know, I'd like to come out and brief you all. But I think that that's something that is appropriate to do, maybe even on an annual basis.
That would be great.
And certainly, if you all would like to meet with me or spend time on the other side of the river, too, at the other aspect of the national park, we certainly can do that. But there's a lot going on and I'm fortunate to have an amazing team of public servants and professionals. And Oregon City, you have some outstanding public servants, too. And it makes all the difference in the world, so.
That's great. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have next a report from the Transportation Advisory Committee, the annual report. Oh, do you have other people that you want to introduce from the Park Service that are here? You introduced Richard?
He's the only one.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Oh, you're welcome. Well, can I introduce myself?
Absolutely.
Yes, you can. Take a moment.
Oh, you can speak in the mic?
Yes, you have to. It's a law.
Make it illegal, right? For those who don't know me, I'm Richard Matthews. I'm the newly-elected president of the McLaughlin Memorial Association. And I just kind of want to make the comment behind Tracy, what she had... We're working hard to kind of fix the bridge that is between the McLaughlin Memorial Association and the National Park Service. We're trying to do grants. We're trying to do fundraisers. We're trying to do donations. And so we're really getting on board and really trying to push as far as we can to continue to grow with the National Park Service and continue to help with the house. It was 109 years ago... 105 years ago that the house was saved by our organization, by a group of ladies who organized themselves in the McLaughlin Memorial Association. So if they can do it 105 years ago, we can continue to do it to this day. And so I really want to push forward to have everybody get together in this town and in Oregon. This is a national park. A lot of people say, well, it's Oregon City's park. No, it's a national park. It is the whole nation. So we need to get everybody together. We just got an $8,000 grant from the National Park Service for a new video and movie for the house.
Nice.
So we're working forward. So we appreciate you giving me a chance to give you my comments and thank you and have a good evening.
I just have one question.
Sure.
How would somebody become a member?
Just come over and I'll give you a slip of paper.
And come over...
Come over to the Barclay House on Fridays and Saturdays and we'd be happy to sign you up.
Okay.
And also, I challenge everyone to come over and visit the house if you've never been there.
Absolutely.
We're happy to give you a tour.
I'm one of the tour guides.
Yes, I hardly recognized you not in costume.
Yeah.
Of course. Yes, a few times.
So...
Is there anything else for the general population that might be watching that we should be aware of?
Yes, please come out and support us by showing up. I think one of the things that I always tell the people I'm giving a tour to is we need two things. We need your help with donations and showing up.
Yeah.
It's the numbers. How can we show the National Park Service that it's worth keeping open by coming out and supporting it and by being there?
Okay.
Can we still buy the annual pass?
Nope.
Nope.
It's free.
It's free.
That's why, instead of having you come in and pay a fee to get in, we let you come in free and then I don't let you out the door until you give me a donation.
I kind of like the annual pass deal.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much for letting me have a comment.
We'll go ahead and proceed to the... We'll get to that after this. Proceed to the Traffic Advisory Committee's annual report.
I'm Steve Johnson, citizen of Oregon City for 36 years, Chairman of the TAC. TAC is short for Transportation Advisory Committee. This year, in some of our accomplishments, we established a committee goal settings. A lot of times, we hear comments from the citizens about pedestrian crossing or safety problems. And a lot of times, we can work it out so they don't have to come for you to see the meeting. We're working on a crosswalk at... By the fire station and the library, push button for pedestrians to come across.
That'd be nice.
John's got his crew out there, cut the pavement. It's been kind of a...
That'd be nice.
It's been kind of a long-going process with this costly. And one of the things in the report that didn't get put in was utility cutting pavement. And you passed it a few months back. And it's going to be helpful for the streets that preserve the streets for not having those dips we always have. And some more other things in here. We have a group of people that are city-minded. Some of them... I have one person who's a City Manager that's on our crew. So it's kind of nice to have somebody there that knows. We listened to a place on Oak... What was it? Glen Oaks Road to... People had trouble coming across the street and the site to pull out there. So we had to lose one parking space on each side or two on one side, just so people could get out safely.
Yeah, that's important.
And that was real... That's some... And that was real, that's some of the stuff important. And cutting pavement. We look at some of the capital construction projects and we look at, and try to advise people what we would like to see. And we'll support them. And most of it's in our report. I don't know much more you want me to say. I'm trying to keep this meeting short for me.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I do have one. We had, and I'm sure it came to you, but we had a fatality on Washington and 12th Street. And it's been a challenging intersection. A few years ago, they put crosswalks there, but it is a difficult intersection. Is there any further discussions on that particular intersection, do you know?
I heard maybe that we're thinking of putting a light in there.
I know they put in some conduits when they actually worked on that intersection so they could have that coming in the future.
Know it's a bad one to come down the hill because it's, and see a lot of, and it's, it's kind of hard for people to make the turn sometimes in there. It's a short.
And some people just stop anyway on Washington thinking it's a stop sign.
I got behind a person the other day and they stopped there and they didn't need to stop.
Yeah, yeah.
And I've heard, my wife says, oh, that person tooting the horn at you? And I says, no, they're tooting. I was making a laugh.
They didn't get her info.
It is kind of a hard intersection to figure out what to do.
And I, I got clobbered at this intersection out here, but I was on a motorcycle a few years ago. And safety is my concern.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. And I know, I think we all appreciate everything that TAC does for us, all of your volunteer work and.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I say something real quick? Steve's still up here. I just want to acknowledge the work that Steve has done and the whole committee. It's, it's a group of nine and it's pretty unusual to not have nine members there, you know, every month. And they sit through a lot of reports. We give a lot of reports as well on things that are going on in the area. And they listen to that tentatively. Interest, they seem like they're interested whether they are or not. I don't necessarily know. And they listen to a lot of citizen complaints. And I think the thing that I've appreciated most is being able to rely on them. Because as you know, a lot of transportation issues come to you when they really should go to the Transportation Advisory Committee first. And so we've been, over the last couple of years, trying to encourage citizens through the CIC or through other, the Planning Commission and other groups, that if they have transportation-related issues, you know, it's not, it's not great for this meeting usually.
Right.
Because, you know, the details and they're passionate about the problem. And this group offers a sounding board. And we've, I think they've proven to be, you know, willing to listen and then provide staff some pretty good direction on, you know, how they, how they'd like to, you know, see it resolved. And so that's been, that's been great to have. And then the only other thing I'll comment, Mayor, on the Washington Street thing is we did, we have recently updated, we've had, we've studied that intersection several times. It really hasn't met traffic warrants, but it's, it's met one of the seven warrants. And we suspect in the next couple of years, it's going to change. So we're going to look harder and harder on whether or not we have the funding through SDCs to pay for that. And if we do, we think that's a high priority area. We recently put together some information that Jim got through the state on accidents. And we, we, I don't think we've shared it with this group, but we shared it with the Transportation Advisory Committee. It shows all the, all the intersections that have accident data associated with them. So that's one that's got some pretty high numbers. And then with the fatality, it's probably.
You might want to share with the people here, the, what the warrants, what warrants mean. That is, it's, it's not all under our control.
Well, it's definitely got to do, the accidents is one of the warrants. Pedestrians is another. Pedestrian usage of the intersections. And there's seven of them. And I'm not going to recall them all. But traffic counts is definitely one of the warrants.
But they're used, I mean, we have to actually get approval for the state for many of these things. Is that not right on the?
Well, it's an industry standard. Typically, you don't want to install signals where they're not warranted through traffic counts and turn movements, those kind of things. So it's not the state that approves location of traffic signals. But I would say if the city were to go around placing signals where they, where they're not warranted, we, you know, then we would find, that kind of results in other problems, delays, other, other problems associated. And we're not really being conservative with the funding that we are getting and placing it at the right place at the right time. But I think 12th and Washington is getting close.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now on to 3EC, the second Tree City Award.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Commissioners. So we were awarded our second annual Tree City USA Award for 2013. As part of that, we were also awarded the Growth Award for the improvements that we've made year over year, from our first year to our second year. Some of the highlights, we have an estimated approximate population of 32,500 when we submitted the information to, for the Tree City USA reporting requirements. During that time, during the 2013 year, we planted 971 trees, pruned 330, and had 355 removed. So that includes public investment in work as well as private. And on the private side, we're primarily focusing on street trees, not plantings on private property. So this would be plantings that occur within the public right-of-way and associated with that. The total public and private investment in planting, maintenance, care for, pruning, so for example, each tree, if you were to come into the city and not want to plant a tree but pay a fee in lieu of, it's right around $300. So that was used in calculating part of this number as well as volunteer time, was 340, was just under $341,000 when you added all the time and effort that went into tree plantings, maintenance, pruning and whatnot over that year. We also held a brown bag pruning seminar that was attended by approximately 20 folks. We also have done quite a bit of coordination with the school district. We had another planting out there with the, with the children of McLaughlin Elementary. So we've been able to do that two years in a row. We actually completed much of the loop, trail loop around their back area with new tree plantings this year. So it's a great event. The mayors come out to speak with the students and they come out and help us get some of these trees in the ground. We were also awarded, we were also acknowledged for these, the improvements we've made in trying to educate the community and setting up programs to address tree maintenance and sidewalk. And the program that we have set up to try and deal with some of these lifting sidewalks that we have throughout the jurisdiction.
Yes.
We also updated our transportation system plan and we expanded the planter strip on local streets to five feet. It was only a half, a half a foot increase, but that extra half a foot does help with trying to reduce some of these root intrusions that we have in the sidewalk. And as you may recall, we previously did update our tree, street tree lists so that they are appropriate trees planted in appropriate widths. But since 2003, that's actually a two and a half foot increase. So we've essentially doubled our planter width since 2003 to the five foot that we have now on local streets. When you break that down for the public and private investment, it comes out to about $10.90 per citizen. And then on the public investment, it was $4.25. And the minimum is $2. So we far exceeded the, the minimum requirements for this award. So with that, I'd be happy to present the mayor with our Growth Award and then answer any questions if he may have about what we've been working on.
I think we can go after.
I'd also like to just quickly acknowledge, as I was going through that, Pete Walter out of the Planning Department has really led up the trees, the original Tree City USA designation. And he's maintained that. He's done a lot of coordination with Public Works and Parks to start tracking all the work that we do throughout the city and putting together that material and trying to coordinate our three departments and make sure that we continue to receive this, this award every year.
Well, thank you very much. And looking forward to receiving this. The Tree City designation has existed. Is this the second year of designation or the third?
It's the second.
Second year of designation. We've also adopted the Heritage Tree Program, which if people have trees either in the public right-of-way or trees that are on their own property, that are heritage in nature, that are, that are old and healthy and some of the month have designated, it actually protects them by the title of the property. So anybody that has a tree that they wish to nominate for that purpose can do so.
Great.
Well, thank you very much.
I'll present you with that.
Thank you.
For Tree City USA, let me get a quick picture. Nancy, did you get what you needed?
I got a couple.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good job, guys, even though it was backwards to me.
My name is Dan, my name is Dan White. And we're from Boy Scout Troop 189. And I've brought a bunch of friends with me.
Yeah, nice.
We're just here doing a merit badge, citizenship in the community to learn a little bit more about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just.
Thank you, guys.
Just like to let the scouts know that we're, we have an elected city commission. In fact, we're, there are going to be elections in November, both for the position of mayor and for two of the positions on, on the commission. Every two years, we have an election for some of our commissioners. We set the policies in the city. We also hired the city manager, David Frazier, here. And we also are responsible for hiring the municipal judge. And it's, David Frazier is the person that implements our policy. He and his staff, he hires the staff. We've got an excellent executive team of management people here in the city. But we are elected form of government. And we also have various volunteer advisory committees that at one point or another, you might be interested in volunteering to serve. In any case, there are opportunities. You have to live in the city in order to, in order to serve. Well, not necessarily. Some of our committees do not require that. But you have to live in the city in order to run for an elected position here. And I don't think any of you are quite reached the age limit yet. But you might be able to.
I don't think there's an age limit.
I don't. Well.
Well, you have to be able to.
There probably should be a cutoff age.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, eighteen years old.
It's something for you guys to look forward to. You could be on the Parks and Rec Committee. And I mean, there's a lot of committees. We always encourage our citizens to become involved.
And you have a good start right now because you're involved in scouts.
Yes.
That's great. You do great work.
So thank you very much for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
We have, we have, this time is a time that we have any comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda. And we have here before us both Tom Guile and Ken Basinger. If you want to both come forward and speak.
Good evening. Is this on? It sounds like. Tom Guile, Oregon City resident. You'll find that your seats up there tonight, the program for the Rose Festival this year. And I just wanted to invite you all down to the Grand Floral Parade this Saturday. My Tower is now at Pioneer Square. I finally made it to Broadway.
Very nice, very nice.
I remember Claire Matt sat across from me last year because I do a lot of Oregon City trivia, like during the Starlight Parade last week. And that was PGE sponsored. I'm going, do you know where the first electrical power came from for Portland? Do you know where Portland was named? Things like that. So I have fun with a lot of trivia. Rocky's been there. David Frazier's been there before and sat across. And I guess that was the early days before I really worked the crowds with lots of trivia. But I sprinkle a little bit of Oregon City trivia in there so, so people understand what goes on out here. And after that presentation earlier about the John McLaughlin House, I'm just wondering, is he going to be showing this weekend at, at the parade?
He was scheduled to do so, but I did receive the invitation and accepted it. But then I realized my grandson would be very, very unhappy with me. They're having their commencement, he's having his commencement exercise at the same time. So unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to be down there.
It's been my pleasure to introduce Dr. John McLaughlin many times over the parade route.
He'll be there in spirit.
Yes.
And. The real McLaughlin.
So anyway, that was just about the Rose Festival. And I wanted to share with something else that just took place today with you, with much trepidation and a lot of excitement. Looks like I will now become a business owner on Main Street.
Nice. Congratulations.
Signing a lease Friday to open up a storefront down there. So very scary, but also very, Rocky was aware that I was thinking about it.
Wow, very cool.
Huh?
Very cool.
How did you know that?
It's just a guess.
Congratulations.
It had a black awning. I went with Halloween. That's all I can say.
So, so Tom, for our viewing audience, what do you do at the Rose Festival? Are you like?
I'm one of the public, this is my.
A salesperson or?
No, I'm a total volunteer. This is my 10-year anniversary of volunteering as a emcee or a parade announcer. Hadn't ever, I've always been going to the parade since I was a little kid. But my parents always wanted to be a part of it. In high school, I was the, one of the photographers for the high schools to cover all the princesses. Back then, I was like, they were these really mature ladies. Now they're all these young girls.
Yeah.
But 10 years ago, they heard my voice out at the Portland Meadows announcing a fundraising event for the School for Deaf Children. And they liked my voice. So they've asked me to be an emcee announcer for the last 10 years. So I do the Starlight Parade and the Grand Floral Parade.
That's wonderful.
This year, as I said, the last couple of years, I've been at Pioneer Square and right across from Nordstrom's. And the only problem I had last year with Claire Matt, she knew all the answers about Oregon City. So she caught all the gifts, the CDs and the beads.
So, boys, this is another great volunteer opportunity for you. So if you go to the, if you go to the parade on Saturday, make sure you wave at Tom.
I gave each of the scouts tonight, I brought with me one of these little temporary tattoos of the roses. So they each had one. It's not exactly a badge they can wear, but at least it's something to do with the Rose Festival. But yeah, I'm sure the Rose Festival could always use good volunteers like these guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Basinger.
Hi, I'm Ken Basinger. And actually, the topic I was going to comment on didn't happen. So I'll just take the time to thank all of the commissioners and the mayor for the huge amount of time and effort that you put forth for the city. We.
Thank you. That's very nice.
Appreciate that.
Like your hat.
Mr. and Ms. Maybe, Damon Maybe.
Damon Maybe, resident of Oregon City. I guess the first part before the clock starts is I actually have a report from the Tri-City Service District Budget Committee, which I was the city representative for. And the first thing is to say, your sewer bill is going up. That's not a big surprise. But I think what, what is important about it is that it's going up, it was proposed to go up by 7.2%, which is basically a little over double what the cost of living is, to build up some construction projects. And then County Commissioner Bernard said, you know, that's a weird number. I like round numbers. Let's add another 40 cents to the rate.
Of course.
So, so the rate's going up even more. And as a citizen representative, in fact, there's four citizen representatives and five county representatives on the thing. We all said, wait a minute, you know, we don't even like 7.2. You haven't justified that to us yet. What are you doing? And to which the general response was, well, it's lower than the rates we pay. So you really shouldn't be that upset.
That's justification.
And we're doing, you know, so much work out there that you don't understand that it's, you know, we have a bigger picture than you do. Which made me flashback to Commissioner, County Commissioners Ludlow and Smith, who said, you guys aren't listening to the people when they got reelected, when they got elected. That was their mantra. We're the people's commissioners and, and we listen to the people. And their hands went right up along with everybody else despite whatever everybody was saying. And then the other element of it is Oregon City is going to be hit with another $1.25 on top of that because of the franchise fee, right-of-way fee that you passed. So for the first time in Tri-City Service District's history, Oregon City, one of the cities, and Oregon City in particular, is being handled differently than all the others. So while Gladstone's getting a generator rebuilt, and West Lynn's getting a generator rebuilt, and Oregon City doesn't even have any generators, we're going to pay for their rebuild.
Yeah.
Because that's the way it's always been. The fee that, that you imposed is now making Oregon City handled differently. So this segues to my public comment section, which is the $1.25. So this segues to my public comment section, which is, the $1.25 isn't just the franchise fee, it's their administrative cost on top of the franchise fee. So, I as a citizen am now paying the franchise or the right-of-way fee that you have imposed, plus their administrative fee on top of that. So I started looking at everything, and I went, wow, we're doing that for sewer, storm, water, electricity, cable, telephone, Tri-City Sewer Service District, and South Fork Water District. All are paying these right-of-way fees, and it's the same right-of-way. The same square footage, whether the wire's going on top or the pipes are going underneath. In some cases, they're passing each other. So exactly how much am I as a citizen paying for the city's right-of-way fee? It all adds up, and it seems to me like I'm paying seven and eight times for one franchise fee, or right-of-way fee, or whatever it is. It's just a pass-through using these other seven entities, and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight entities that I could count for the city to impose more cost on me. And I'm one of the fixed income people. I'm a substitute teacher. I made a grand total of $8,000 last year. So if it costs something to do this, we should be upfront about it, and we shouldn't be hiding it. Additionally, the city has a dedicated communications line between here and the police station. And I don't think they're paying a franchise fee, or a right-of-way fee, or whatever. So if everybody's supposed to do it, make sure you're catching everybody.
And that's the intent.
Absolutely. That's the intent.
But the problem is, is you're not catching anybody but the citizens. And that's my point. No matter who these people are, they're passing it on to us. The second half of that is, I really disagree with the fact that it's happening on essential services. You know, if I don't like paying the fee for the cable bill, I can turn the cable off. If I don't like the fee for my telephone, I can turn my telephone off or go to cable. I can't stop my water. I can't stop my electricity. I can't stop my sewers. I have no way to opt out of this fee structure. So I think that, and they have as a business, no way to opt out of serving the city. Comcast can say, you know what, Oregon City, you're charging too much. I'm not going to do business with you. And they can go someplace else. The water department can't. The sewer department can't. So I don't think the fee is very equitable. And I know I've got a red light, I've got four seconds, last thing. Parks Maintenance, you need to pass a bond to fix them. I was up at the memorial service. There's an inch and a half rise in the walkway that disabled vets could stumble over. If that was in front of my house, I'd have a stripe and a fee in front of me saying, fix your sidewalk. It's, the parks are how we're represented. Atkinson Park, the path is completely disintegrated. Buena Vista Houch, which is an income generator, is condemned right now because maintenance has not happened. The city will support one-time bond. And these are not slow fixes. This is stuff that needs to hit the ground hard and fast. You've got, how much is it going to cost the city if somebody falls and breaks a leg on a sidewalk that you should have repaired? So...
Mr. Mayby, there's no intent to have that burden on South, on the South Fork. That's not going to be an issue. That burden on Tri-Cities paid for only by the City of Oregon City. We expect that to be an equitable distribution of those costs. And if in fact that's the intention of the Clackamas Board of County Commissioners...
It is how the motion was passed.
We're going to actually, we're actually going to look at that issue because we expect equity, the equity in those payments of those right-of-way fees. Anybody that serves should be paying for it.
I understand that. I'm just saying it was passed specifically with paying a $1.25 for Oregon City.
We can't control what the county does. The Atkinson Park that you bring up, actually, we've issued two amazing grants, I think. We issued a lot of grants through Metro Enhancement, but one of the new projects with the partnership with the Oregon City High School Construction Project is to start tackling Atkinson Park next.
I appreciate that. It's just, I've been through enough parks. It's systemic. When we, when I was on the city commission, and we were broke, we didn't fix anything for two years. That's a tidal wave that you've got to get on top of. And I'm sorry it happened, but I think we just need to fix our parks, and we need to do it faster rather than slower.
Doing it.
Thank you.
In answer to that, I'm going to, I'm going to thank you for serving on various budget committees, not only, not only those where the city has representation that you've been appointed to. You ask very tough questions, and hold people's feet to the fire. We appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
By the way, scouts, this is the other side of the job where they get yelled at.
And we take it with a smile and say, thank you, Mr. Mayby.
And all they do every year is they want to double their wages, but the wages are zero, so doubling zero does nothing.
So we could triple this time because we sat here?
Why not? I mean, you're adding fees everywhere. Why not just triple it?
Triple zero.
So we're going to add a park's fee to that.
Yeah. Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it's true. Sometimes citizens are not happy with us, so...
So, now's the, now's the time. Anybody want to pull anything from the agenda? I hear a motion to adopt it, or consensus to adopt it? Anything to be pulled? Hearing none, we'll continue with the rest of the commission agenda. We have public hearings. One is a resolution, excuse me, a resolution adopting findings to support alternative contracting method for renovation and expansion of Oregon City Library Project at the historic Carnegie Library. I'll be starting off by asking Maroon Cole, the staff person, to speak.
Good evening and thank you, commissioners. First of all, I'd like to introduce our project manager, Charlie Baumann, and have him come up to the table, please. Charlie is with Shields, Obletz and Johnson, and he has been retained as, his firm has been retained as our project manager to help us through this process. And one of the things that we determined early on in the project to try to do was to bring a contractor on very early in the process in order to help that wealth and breadth of experience influence the design process. And doing this is a little bit unusual, and you have to go through a legal process. And it's an alternative construction method, and it includes this public hearing, at which time we present findings of the reasons why we should be doing this. And those were posted and presented, and public notice was put up appropriately. Bill Kabeizman was the person who did all of those findings for us. And so what we'd like to ask you for tonight is approval of that methodology because we think that the complexity of this project would be well-served, and the cost would be less overall for the project if the contractor was brought on early on to help influence the decisions that were made.
Thank you. I know you spoke to that, I believe, at the last meeting, and I give you the opportunity to see, say why this is a better way to go. Or perhaps one of you.
Yeah, go ahead, Charlie.
I'll address that. First of all, let me say that every sub, every major subcontract that's let by the general contractor will be bid. So we're not really losing competitiveness here. What we are doing is hiring a general contractor to assist us during design. And what that means is, they will be part of the team. They'll attend our design meetings. They'll obviously be there throughout construction. But they do all of the cost estimating for the project. And if we are not, if the initial set of drawings, for instance, does not meet the budget, they will help us with constructibility issues and brainstorming about materials and methodologies and sequencing and structural systems, HVAC systems, data systems, whatever we need to address in order to get the project back within budget. So it's a, it's a, it's a real benefit. I've been involved with projects for the last 20 years, and virtually all the projects I've worked on have used this method, both in the private sector and in the public sector. So that's the real benefit. We're going to pay the contractor, the general contractor, in a cost of the work plus a fee with a guaranteed maximum price contract. So the general contractor charges the city for everything that goes into the project, all manpower, materials, et cetera. And on top of that, he charges a fee. So there's the cost of the work, and there's a fee. The guaranteed maximum price is a cap on the cost of the work plus the fee. He may not, the contractor may not charge more than the guaranteed maximum cost price. So, and one caveat, the, if something changes on the project, if we add a new system or we change something materially in the project, that change bumps up the guaranteed maximum price. So if there's a change order, it raises the bar. So I liken this to a high, think of a high jump bar. We're paying for cost of the work plus the fee, but it's not going to exceed that guaranteed maximum price. In the contract that we have out in the RFP that's circulating right now, and we're getting proposals on Friday from up to 22 contractors who picked up the RFP...
Nice, very nice.
In the contract is a provision for savings. So if the cost of the work plus the fee comes in less than the guaranteed maximum price, there's a gap there.
Yes.
And as an incentive, we have a clause written into the contract that says, we'll split that with the general contractor. And in the RFP, we've asked the general contractor, what would that split be? And I can virtually assure you that the split will come back, we'll give it all back to you.
Of course.
So, really, we're going to pay for what we build, and we're going to give the general contractor a fee for his services, and I would expect that fee to be in the 3.5% to 4.5% range based on other projects. And we're going to get their estimating, their advice. And really, the greatest benefit to this type of contracting is that when we start construction, we will have a project that's within budget.
Yes.
If you draw a set of plans, put it out to bid, and it comes in over the budget, you've got a problem. This form of contracting, I've yet to have a project not stay within budget unless you add something. But that's the true advantage. So it really means, I think, that we will have a project that's on time and within budget.
I have a question. So you're saying if we have a change order, that could bump the ceiling up?
Right.
There's not a case where we will have something that's coming in higher than we imagined, and in order for the general to save what he wants to save, we end up with an inferior quality on a sub?
Now, the architect, which is Scott Edwards, will be drawing a regular set of construction documents, and will have a set of specifications just like on any other project. So he can't arbitrarily alter what's in the contract documents. So what we, there are three elements to any construction project: scope of the work, cost, and quality. If you fix any two of those, the third one has to find its own level. So, you know, you can tinker with any one of those to try and bring things back within budget.
Right.
But we'll know that before we actually bid the subcontracts.
Okay.
We had a case on the remodel of the, I should say, the restoration of the Carnegie back in 2000 where one of the subcontractors on that did not follow the specs and was removed from the project, was not paid, and tore down the brickwork and brought in somebody else that did it according to specs. So you've got those guarantees, and I know we're, it was under our, I think I was under Public Works at the time that did that assessment, and they were tough. They made sure everything followed the specs.
Lots of eyes that are going to watch this parade. Mine included.
I think personally, this is a good concept because just because you write it on paper and it looks good, doesn't really mean that the box is actually going to fit. And the other set of eyes will help with that. One little caveat, I guess, is a few years ago, and in our city north of us, they had built to the extreme in marble and fancy windows, and people were very unhappy. So we're going to keep this kind of Oregon City kind of feel, right? We're not going to put million-dollar windows in and...
Then we'd only have 10 windows.
You know? But, you know, our citizens want us to make sure that we spend our money wisely. So, and I'm with them. So I just want to make sure that we're not putting in stainless steel everywhere, or I don't know, whatever, fancy windows or whatever.
Commissioners, you're going to have a chance to sign off on what this, this structure looks like.
Yes.
We're trying to keep in mind, though, at the same time that when Oregon City builds a library, sometimes it has to last 100 years.
Yes.
So we're trying to use, we're going to try to use materials that will last a long time.
Yes.
But also will look pleasing and appropriate to the structure. So you will have a final sign-off. And also, there'd be many charrettes and public opportunities for you and the citizens in the community to be engaged and involved in what the structure looks like, what's inside of it. And we would really encourage you to participate as much as you have time for.
And that will be advertised to the general population.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
This requires action on our part.
We have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing. And so, with that, thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody that wishes to speak to this issue, please come forward. Charles, well, no, he's just, he's just here. With that, I see nobody else stepping forward to close the public hearing. Any questions that we have before we ask for a motion?
Move to approve 14-325, Resolution Number 14-13.
Second.
Vote, please.
Do you have to read?
No.
No.
It's not in words. It was unanimous.
So, the guarantee is basically the 10, well, the $6 million bond that was incurred by the voter, that will be within those bounds of the $6 million plus the money that we had already set aside for the project. That, we're going to go on into our next piece of business, and this is a continuance, just want to just check something first. Yes, this is a continuous proposed zone change from R10, single dwelling, to R8, family units and 29 subdivision located between Ames and Holton, OR. This is a continuance.
Mr. Mayor, this is a recommended continuance. You might see if there's anybody who wants to testify tonight. If so, then I'll give you the usual cautions. Otherwise, we can move on.
There's six people.
Yeah, there's people.
Okay, so, we do open the public hearing, and we, well, Debbie Fuller and Shirley Patton, please come forward. And if you could speak in the order I called you, please.
While they're settling down, I might ask, is any of the commissioners had any pre-hearing or ex-party contact on this matter?
No.
No.
All right. I have to give you the cautions, I'm sorry. Participants in this hearing must address the criteria that are contained in the staff report. If anybody wants me to read those criteria, I'd be glad to do so. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to allow other parties or you as the decision-maker to make a decision on that issue will preclude appeal to the Land Support of Appeals on that issue. Also, for the applicant, I don't know if the applicant is here tonight, if the applicant wishes to contest any of the conditions, the applicant must again raise those matters with sufficient specificity to allow the commission to respond to that issue as well. Thank you.
Does anybody want the conditions read at this point? Does anybody want the conditions read at this point?
Don't have to.
Okay.
So, I'm Debbie Fuller. I live on Ames Street in the Park Place Neighborhood Association. I'm the Land Use Chair just recently assigned. And I didn't know what the extent of your knowledge was on this particular zone change request, but we just wanted to, we just found out that we were actually able to come here and speak before you. And we, there's a few of us here that just wanted to make sure you knew of what some of our issues are. The majority of, Ames Street is a dead end road, basically. It's one way in, one way out. And we are opposed to the change in R10. It's been R10 forever. Most of the housing, new, most recent houses, just within the last couple of years, were built R10, had to stay to that zoning. Mr. Handris initially proposed R6, to go from R10 to R6. He attended a Park Place Neighborhood Association meeting and there was many of us there that were in opposed to that. So, then he changed to portion, a portion of R10 and a portion of R8, but he still wants to keep the R8. Our concern is that with the majority of the houses, some of them are more than a half acre, we live on two acres, is that if it gets changed to R8, we're afraid that eventually then they'll want to change to R6. And I know that there's some proposals out there in other parts of Oregon City that are currently R8 and they're trying to zone them to R6. That would mean that he could then come in and build inward on some of the properties that are much larger than R10 in the area. And it's on the outskirts of Oregon City, it's on the city limits, next to Sears Nursery. The reason my husband and I moved out there 10 years ago was because we liked that country feel. And it was more quality of life for us and our hobbies and that sort of thing. So, there's, we did go to the Planning Commission on May 12th and we brought a few things to the issue. But then, since then, I have obtained a petition of three and a half pages of homeowners. There's probably about 40 houses along that street right now and I have three and a half pages that I wanted to submit to you tonight, a petition of folks that want to retain the R10, that haven't been able to attend the meetings. So, I'll give that, I didn't make copies for everybody, but I'll certainly give it to somebody.
Nancy gets it, yeah.
And then, I received the paperwork, I think last night, on the, the new layout that Mr. Handris has put forth. And so, I didn't have a whole lot of time to read through everything, but the one thing that I did look at was he's got the lot sizes, the widths, the depths, that they typically will do in, at the planning meeting. And all but one of these, there's 27 lots, all but one of them are incorrect as far as their size, the actual size of the lot, the math is incorrect. And so, I don't know if the width and depth are correct on these lots.
And who gave you that?
This is part of the record from Pete Walter.
Okay.
So, specifically, Lot 22, which is kind of a triangle shape down at the bottom, close to the Barlow Trail, is, he's listed it as, and I'm not sure if it's him or whoever, the staff, it's listed as being a square foot size of 8583, and in all actuality, it's only 5,100 if you do the math for the width and the depth. And so, we're concerned about that.
Yeah.
And they have the, you know, the average is a little off, the minimum and maximum, but the, probably the biggest piece is, in R8 lots, don't they have to be, is it 20% of the 8,000 square foot? They can't be any lower than that? Okay. This particular one in, on Lot 22, measures out according to their width and depth at 5,100 square feet. And since it's not square, you would almost need to divide that in half, I'm not sure how they, how the calculation runs, but that would make that particular lot about 2,550 square feet. So, just, I'm just going by the numbers that were given to me in the staff report. So, that's a concern of ours, too, is if this is incorrect, and I'm not sure how it's incorrect, we did find one correct one, but the rest are all wrong.
Yeah, that's probably something you'd have to talk with staff.
Yes, go ahead.
There are 40 homes on Ames? Did that, is that what you said?
There's about from Swan into, into the end of Ames because there's just two new subdivisions that have been put in in the last three or four years.
So, are these, are these lots directly on Ames or do they go off on other streets?
The new, the proposed ones?
No, the, you said, I thought you said that there were 40 homes on Ames Street.
On Ames, no, these are, well, they're small subdivision, the smaller subdivisions, there's seven in one portion off the Street of Ames.
Off, they're on another street?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Because I couldn't figure out how there are 40 houses on Ames.
Yeah. But we do have some definite concerns about the, the street coming out, and I've probably been over my three minutes, I'm sorry, the street coming out to Holcomb School Boulevard.
Yeah.
That's a big concern of ours. And I'm sure there's maybe other people that may speak to that. So, I just wanted to give you my, my little piece of, the majority of the neighbors really do oppose this. We want to keep R10, we want to keep nice lots, nice lot houses and kind of maintain our, the feel for the, for the neighborhood.
Are you the horses?
No.
Okay.
The horses, the horses is the property owner that sold to Mark Handris.
Oh. Well, congratulations on newly elected to the Park Place Neighborhood Land Use Chair.
It'll be a challenge, but it should be fun.
That's great.
Ms. Patton, is that right, Patton?
Yes. My name is Shirley Patton. I live on Forsyth Road. Our property butts up against what is now Sunnyside, Sunnybrook Estates. Boss started building it and then Icon took it over and finished it. Their retention pond drains into the ditch that runs right alongside our property line from the back of the property to the front road. We're the ones with, I don't know if you've heard, but we have severe property erosion from this ditch that Dan Sears dug within inches of our property line when he put it in for himself, for his own drainage. And so, because the ditch was there, they got to drain the retention pond for Sunnybrook into that. And, and Dan Sears appealed it and he was turned down because all the studies said that there was going to be no impact on anybody because of it. Well, I'm, we're living proof, there's impact.
Yeah.
Ever since we've lived there, we've lived there 26 years, ever since we've lived there, we've always dealt with a little bit of a water problem. But when all that pavement was laid, laid back there for Sunnybrook, our basement of our home flooded three times in two years. We had never had any front property issues with water except for the ditch erosion, minor ditch erosion that started up front. We had to pay to have a dig dug, a dig, a ditch dug across our pasture...
Yeah.
...to stop all that water from coming forward so our basement wouldn't flood anymore. My concern is, you know, 11 houses were put back there in Sunnybrook. My concern is, the more house, and the other houses are going just beyond, are going to be built just beyond that, and they are going to have a retention pond that's going to drain into the first retention pond, which is going to drain into the ditch. During the winter, that pond runs to the brim rushing. At one point, it breached the edge in the middle of our pasture and started running into our pasture and we had to sandbag the edge of that ditch, not once, but twice, to stop that from happening. Since then, we've had to have dirt fill brought in to build that ground up so that would stop. And that seems to have stopped it, but once again, that ditch runs full during the winter, during the rainy season. At this point, it did not run full until they put that subdivision behind us. And now, they want to put almost three times that size, another subdivision behind that and run it, drain it off into that ditch. How much do we have to take? The, the front property line, our ditch up front, has eroded our property line so bad that the fence, our vinyl fence that's up front there, all the posts are exposed on the ditch side, it's starting to lean over, it's going to fall soon, and the, and the property has eroded inches, some as far as six inches into our property on the other side of our fence. Something has to be done. Everybody keeps adding to the problem. I realize Dan Sears dug the ditch, but everybody keeps adding to the problem and nobody seems to care.
Can you show the pictures?
Yeah, we do have pictures, if you're interested in seeing them.
Mr. Mayor, this is an on-the-record hearing. So, I would caution you against taking new evidence on the matter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have Bob LaSalle and Michael Shaw, please come forward. Thank you.
Mr. Conkle also points out to me that the hearing before the Planning Commission is not concluded yet.
Oh.
So, I would encourage the folks who do have concerns to make sure that the Planning Commission is aware of those concerns.
Could you, be sure to do that because he indicated that some of what you said may not have been on the record. The Planning Commission is still, is still operating.
It's still open.
You can give the same kind of testimony to the Planning Commission, it will then be on the record.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Must be somebody else.
Yeah, Bob, yeah, he can come forward. If he's here, Michael Shaw, you want to come forward, too? Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Bob LaSalle. I live in Oregon City, I think you already know that. I'm the Chair of the Park Place Neighborhood Association and I really have five minutes available to me, but I'm just going to ask that you watch the video of the Planning Commission meeting of May 12th, which will give you all the testimony of many of the neighbors and also my comments. I must say that I'm acting as Chair of the Park Place Neighborhood Association, therefore my comments are in support of those neighbors, which is my responsibility to them as the Chair. And unfortunately, there have been some rumors passing around that I'm anti-development. I'd like to just put it on the record now that that is totally untrue. The last map of the lots of that area show where the Barlow Trail goes through there now, which is thanks to one of the Planning Commissioners of bringing that, asking that issue. Because in the original first two maps, the Barlow Trail wasn't even in there. And so, now, the builder has had to revise all his plans and the size of the lots and all that sort of thing. So, it was kind of a bullet that was dodged. And I've talked with the Planning Department people now and they're making provisions so that that won't happen. Again, the Barlow Trail will be more easily determined on any maps that anybody might look at. So, thank you for that Planning Commissioner's alertness. Again, please look at the video, the Planning Commission of May 12th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Michael Shaw and Stephen Zabrower, is that right? In your call, Michael Shaw first?
I'm Michael Shaw.
Go ahead.
Am I first? I'm kind of along with the same, everybody here that wants the R10. My, my take on the R10 is less houses, less traffic. We have two small streets we're worried about. One of them's Ames, it's, in places it's 19 feet wide. And if you're 19 inches, I mean, if you're six inches off, you're in the ditch. There's places where I meet the garbage truck, I have to pull over and let the garbage truck go by. I sat, my car's going that direction. I'm, I'm at almost the very end of, I'm on pasture way, the very end, I'm one house away from the new houses being built. I'm probably going to drive out and drive through that housing, the new housing, to get to, to the Boulevard to go out, because it's going to be shorter for me. When I drove down there and looked at it, counted the traffic, I had 2:15 with schools getting out, and in an eight-minute period, 38 cars have gone by, not in, but gone by, different directions. And that's a lot of traffic to have that intersection that is almost a driveway. I know it's a public street, but it's more of a driveway. And the only way for parents to pick their kids up early for appointments or something is park on that street. So, by the time you get 13 buses going in, kids coming out, that is actually a blind corner. There's, you have to be past the crosswalk before cars can see you or you can see cars. So, that has to be fixed and I don't know how that's going to be fixed. But that's part of the problem. And the Barlow Trail or the Barlow Road, that excites me because that's part of, I'm, I'm part of my, you know, my family came over on that road. And kind of why I bought my house there, it's not why I did, it's kind of why I did. But they're, they're building a pathway for the kids to get into that school? Why can't they use the Barlow Road to get in and put a sign on it? I mean, I've driven around looking at the Oregon Trail, on the Oregon Trail coming up on Applegate and that, and everything, everything's marked pretty well, but they're losing it every day. They're losing it from asphalt, cement, houses. So, it'd be nice to have that marked in Oregon City.
Sure.
Go ahead.
My name is Stephen Brower. I live on Ames Street. I am directly affected by this development. My backyard will become this development. And I have a question for you, is what power and authority do you have to block or change this development?
We can deny it. I mean, we can deny it, that if we do deny it, it's appealable to a higher authority.
I have two comments. On a personal side and as a new homeowner there, I am for the R10 development, not R8. I spent almost a year, I just moved from Spokane, Washington to Oregon City, and I spent almost a year looking for my home. I was looking for a minimum of 10,000 square foot lot because I don't want to live on a small parcel. I don't want to be in my backyard, you know, watching my neighbors and through the windows and whatnot. It took a long time to find that and to change the zoning now and allow smaller lots would be unfair. I just closed on my house in January. So, having moved to a neighborhood that had R10 and to have it changed immediately, I think destroys the neighborhood and what I was specifically looking for. So, on that front, I ask that you keep it R10. On a separate front, for, I ask that you use your power and authority to block the development from safety standpoint of the neighborhood. Egress, getting in and out of the property and the development, where you've heard from other neighbors on the water issues, and safety just of the general neighborhood, getting onto Ames off of Swan, they are all issues that will not be answered or resolved with this development, just exacerbated and made worse by the development. I am for proper and mindful development, but this is development for the sake of development and for the sake of profits. And it does not do anything to add to the neighborhood and add to the community. It is a vacant piece of lot on the very boundary of the urban growth boundary and it's someone that has the ability to build and develop, but it really is not necessary for the neighborhood. You know, from that standpoint, I do ask that, that you use your powers to block.
It wouldn't be before us unless it was within the urban growth boundary. It is in the area.
It is, yeah, it's right on the boundary. The property is, is the very end of it. Yeah.
Can you tell me what Section 50 was that we passed? Wasn't there a law that we passed where, wasn't it?
Give me a little more than that.
Where if we don't let them develop, then the city has to buy it?
But you do have a whole set, and this is not the time to do it, because you haven't got a developed record, of requirements that you have to consider when you deal with development.
Okay.
Once again, one of the reasons being continued is because the planning commission has not made the decision. I want to be sure to get anything that you're saying here onto the record, because when it comes to us, we have to operate on the record that's already there. So you were talking about de novo, we can't accept new information. Make sure you get your, get your testimony, either in written form or verbal, into the planning commission.
All right. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Can I enter a couple of questions into this for, for the planning commission? Number one, in their submission to the planning commission, have they proposed any improvements on Ames?
I guess I'd be a little bit more comfortable to let the planning commission record play out. They did amend it, and as part of their application, they are talking about widening Ames for a small portion.
Okay. Then along that same line is, as being intimately acquainted with Holcomb for thirty-two years of having children there, traffic going in and out of Holcomb is awful at morning and afternoon. Are there any traffic changes being proposed on Holcomb?
The proposed connections between Ames and the drive to Holcomb School are in the TSP showing those connections. They've proposed those. None of the warrants were met.
To change traffic on that blind corner on Holcomb?
Correct. None of the warrants were met.
Wow.
And that's why, I mean, it'd be helpful if we can kind of get the record up to you. You know, you have the applicant's transportation engineer, our transportation engineer with the analysis, which would give you a chance to look at that. But it is something that was, that has been discussed with the planning commission, it was included in the review, the transportation analysis review that was required of the applicant. So we're certainly aware of it, and I think once you see those actual findings, and it may help you inform some more questions that you could have for us when it comes before you.
Thanks.
Kind of based on that, any kind of off-site, infrastructural things that might, that might be required of the applicant?
Off-site?
Yeah. Well, the discussion, the discussion of the ditch and so forth, I presume that the retention funds are going to be able to deal with those issues, but since that's going to be on the record before us.
They will be designed to the city's standard for detention and release. But obviously, there are, you know, there were the same questions raised here tonight that were raised with the planning commission, so we're still.
You're still working through it.
Creating that record.
Okay.
Thank you. Would that close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, the, the motion that you might consider is...
Oh, for continuous. No, it's still closing the public hearing, right?
That's right.
Yes.
Is to continue this public hearing to the city commission meeting of June 18, 2014, and refer the testimony received to the planning commission, so that it's not lost.
Move to approve that.
I second.
Including the forwarding of the testimony.
May I ask a question first? If it's continued to the 18th, will there be a vote on the 18th?
We just have to go to a date certain, because we had, when we did our noticing, we had noticed the planning commission meeting on, on May 12th, and we had noticed for tonight's hearing. So in order to keep, without going back and re-noticing, we need to continue it. So the planning commission is meeting next Monday. They may or may not make a decision. And then, either it's going to be before you on the 18th, and you're going to decide whether you can make a decision that night, or if you need to continue it at that point.
Because I won't be here, and I want to help with this decision.
It just has to be due a date certain, that's all.
Well, I guess I'm not sure how to handle that.
You've got the 18th right now, that's your default date. If it needs to be continued further, then...
We can make the request that it be not. I mean, we can ask the continuance to be no earlier than the date you could...
Well, you should probably go to the next meeting in July then, but you do have 120 days.
A 120-day requirement that we need to work within too.
We'll be back on the 24th.
Can you call in?
Our next meeting won't be until July.
You can call in too.
It's a big...
It'd be nice and early.
Can you do it over, can you oversee?
Are you sure you want to do that, Nancy, huh?
In any case, all right. And so, we've, we've moved for the continuance?
We moved and seconded, so now just...
So we got to go ahead for the vote.
Voting for the...
Voting, there it goes.
There we go.
And it's a unanimous decision to continue the hearing into the next commission meeting. I'm asking for, I've been asked for a break, and I'll give a break. I'd like to see us here no later than 10 minutes till the hour.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reconvening, the city commission meeting. The next item on our agenda is also a continuance of an appeal, the Public Works Director's decision denied requests for system development charge reduction for the redevelopment. Now, this was a continuance to this meeting, it's not a request for a continuance beyond this meeting, is that right?
It is a, it is a request for a continuance.
Oh, it is a request for a continuance, so, Mr. Lewis, you want to start off?
Thank you, Commissioner. Tonight, yes, this issue came before you at the last meeting during public hearing, and we're asking you to continue it at least one more meeting, and some of the reasons I'll go through here. But this is, this is to continue the public hearing that we had on June 18th, the city commission meeting for the appeal of the Public Works Director's decision that the property does not qualify for an SDC reduction, because the property has not had an existing structure used for more than eighteen months. So we're basically asking you to continue it, allow some public comment, and I think the applicant's representative is here and plans to, would like to share some information that they have. The only other piece of information that we've provided for you today is, there was some discussion at the end of the meeting that kind of caught me by surprise, which was the bankrupt rate. And at that meeting, we talked about a couple of things. We talked about it being 1% over prime, and we talked about it being 9%. And what we found is that the state law sets 9% as the minimum, but there's an out to that, that allows us to, if we, you know, before we, if we work with an applicant, or if we work with somebody before, we've actually established that, that loan, or we've established the terms, we have the opportunity to change that rate or reduce that rate. Now, we've talked about that internally, we've recommended in this case, that would be something that would make sense, to offer some rate less than 9%. And in the commission report, I listed two, and I'm not sure I have full support of my city manager on that issue, but we definitely think that there's...
It's my turn now.
Now the city manager's going to...
Are you going to deny the support?
Now, what I want to say though, is I think this is going to be good news for both the applicant, because I think it'll be a lot more, the solution we're trying to work on, that we're not ready to roll out tonight, is something that would extend the period basically fourfold over what it is now, and even beyond the seven years that the applicant is concerned about, so that they would recover something. But the solution I'm looking for is not one that puts the commission in the awkward position of picking winners and losers and interest rates that sound good today because rates are low, wouldn't sound good five years from now perhaps, and then you're, you're sort of metting out piecemeal solutions. And I'm looking for something that would apply not only for this applicant, but for all the future applicants that come down the pike, so that they don't feel a need necessarily to appeal, that we have a longer period, and that it's something we can administer with consistency. And once the development community learns that, that new paradigm, and of course, we also have to be sure that we don't make it too complicated, because we know when we collect SCCs, the more complicated it gets, the more likely we are to make mistakes, which we've done before. So that's the kind of solution we're working on, and we cover an eight-year period. We just arrived at this yesterday afternoon in a kind of a long brainstorming session with several of us. So we don't, we're not ready to roll it out tonight, but that's what we're going to be coming forward with, and that's going to, if the commission likes what we're coming forward with, it's going to save the applicant about half of the SDC amount, which is a lot better for them than even a 2% or 3% interest rate. So that's what we're working on, but we'll have all the details for you in two weeks.
At the work session.
At the work session.
At the work session.
And then you would be, that would be a code amendment that we would be asking for, and we would be asking that that code amendment be retroactively applied. Since their application isn't concluded, we think we can do that. So that's a broader solution to a problem that hopefully would, would then not come before you very often, because people would feel like they're really getting a fair shake. So.
Now, I presumably have the opportunity to open the public hearing. Could I just invite the applicant to speak and, without opening the public hearing, or not? If he wishes to.
If it's a public hearing, I don't think anybody, other than the applicant, is probably going to speak in any event.
Yeah. Open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to speak?
I've got some last-minute news here, which is very positive. Todd Iceland, Iceland Architects. I appreciate Mr. Fraser's consideration to the additional timeframe, that's really what we're after. And I did do some research and looked into what other cities in the region do, and just made some phone calls this morning, because we were very concerned. We didn't think the bankrupt option was even something we wanted to consider. Other cities in the metro area, most of them have no expiration on time. In fact, some of them, one of them told me, well, two of them, they will go with the most intense prior use that you can prove, in the building's history or the site's history, and give you credits for that. They feel like they legally need to do that, and that is based on some definitions in ORS, which define system development charges and how they are assessed and what they can be used for. I did bring copies of that, along with the SDC estimates that we've been working with Mr. Lewis on. I think that the city's going the right direction in SDCs and how they're handled. It's, in the past, there have been a lot of inconsistencies, to say the least, and there needs to be a better methodology, and I think the city's definitely headed the right direction. I think getting rid of this timeframe would be a wonderful thing and really encourage development.
Okay. Now, I assume before the study session, you'll be talking to the applicant too?
We've, we've been talking to the applicant, it's just a matter of trying to decide how to move forward on this timeframe issue, and making sure we're all on the same page with regard to that. And we, yeah, so.
So this is going to come before the work session, and we don't vote in the work session, isn't it?
No, we don't.
It'll have to be continued at another, another regular commission meeting.
Okay, okay.
But it'll give you a chance to ask us questions. Continue today?
The request is to continue it to June 18. I will say that unless you're prepared to adopt an ordinance amendment at that time, you may find yourself continuing yet to another date. But that'll give you the opportunity to have the work session discussion and decide what you're going to do.
Okay.
And Mayor, just so you know, if the work session is productive and, and to the extent that you like the proposal we bring back, then we would contemplate bringing back to you an ordinance amendment at the next meeting.
At the next meeting.
Okay.
You know, I feel really great about this, because I think consistency, and I've heard that, I think that is so important, just that people are treated, you know, fair and equitable across the board, that we're not making special circumstances for one person here and not the other person here, and that type of thing. So I think that's great. So should we move to continue?
Commissioner, I also want to mention that, of course, there's lots more issues, but some of the ones that the applicant's representative just mentioned about whether the bankrupting rate, you know, it's true that it's very flexible before you actually have an approved project, but as Wyatt reminded me, we don't have underwriters, and we don't want to become a bank, and we don't want to compete with a bank.
Absolutely.
And if the bank can't see enough value in the project and enough equity with the developer, then we don't want a black point in situation for ourselves. So we have, we have that. So we're also looking at not just what's fair for applicants and consistent, but what we can do. Some of the cities that the applicant's representative mentioned that have no time limit and take all kinds of proof, well, they have much larger staff, some of them, than we do, and they have people that can look at these historic resources. Many of those cities are much newer than we are, and they literally have updated plaits for everything in the city. So we're, we're trying to tailor something that works for us, but also gives the development community a break over what we've been doing.
Well, the two that allow the, two out of the nine that I surveyed today, that allow the most intense use, they're Gresham and Westland.
Right.
So.
Not a lot of development in one, and a whole lot more staff in the other. But, but there are some bigger cities too that do that. And, you know, that is one of the possibilities that we brainstormed yesterday, and we were concerned about the amount of research that we would get drawn into doing and trying to validate, but we think we have a solution that's better for, for our application than that, but that is another possibility, that's another one of the possibilities.
Again, we have no assurance that this will be adopted either.
Right.
And, you know, I guess we're kind of taking a risk at that point. Do we hold off on our application, or?
We're going to be making a recommendation at the work session, and depending on the feedback we get from our commissioners, we will have an ordinance ready for adoption at the next meeting that would be applicable to your development. So, hate to say, trust us.
Trust us, Todd, we do trust us.
Todd, you do still need to provide some of that prior use evidence, because that's key.
And that's actually in the city record.
Yeah.
It is in the city record from the historic review requirement that the existing building be documented.
Okay. It would help me if you could pull that from your record and share it with me.
It's in the planning file.
You guys need to talk offline.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
Well, since I made all these copies.
Yeah, you might just as well pass them out.
Just look at the last page before you consider it helping, it has the ORS definitions that I think are important.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, there it is.
Nice and highlighted, thank you.
For the record.
Closing public hearing?
Nancy, I'll give you, thank you.
Could I hear a motion for a continuance until the 18th?
I move to continue to the 18th, June, or June 8th, second.
June 8th?
Motion made.
Or June 8th.
Votes in.
Carol?
Motion made by Carol Polley, signed by Betty Mum, and unanimous vote. With that, we go into a motion to approve the, oh no, I got an amendment, excuse me, we've got general business, my apologies, amendment to the intergovernmental agreement to extend the term, the $1,934,821 City Hall remodel loan for an additional five years. And we'll go to our finance director, Mr. Borno.
Thank you, Mayor Neely, and members of the commission. Seems like we just had this discussion, but we did.
Yes.
So before you is an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement that the city entered into with the Urban Renewal Commission to extend the terms of the loan that the city made to the Urban Renewal Commission for an additional five-year period. And some quick background on the, on this report, the Urban Renewal Commission borrowed $1.9 million from the city in 2009, about five years ago, and the funds were used to remodel this city hall building that we're sitting in now. The original loan is set to expire in August, but there's an option to renew that was in the original loan agreement for an additional five-year period. The Urban Renewal Commission requires that additional time to be in compliance with certain debt covenants that they have with other external lenders, and earlier this evening, the Urban Renewal Commission unanimously agreed to extend the agreement. And so at this point, staff is requesting that the city commission do the same for the city. Happy to entertain any questions.
If you could, for the audience, you could indicate the fact that this would actually be paid off in the five-year period.
Correct, thank you, Mayor. So we will make annual payments of principal one-fifth over the next five years, and at the end, at the conclusion, the debt will be paid off.
The "we" is your...
I'm sorry, the Urban Renewal Commission will make payments to the city of that loan. So you, as the lender, would are very generous if you grant this to the Urban Renewal Commission, and then the debt will be repaid to you.
If we didn't approve this, would we get the money all at once now?
You know, I would recommend that you be generous.
You got a check? You got a credit card?
And, and as, you know, as a good, the rate on the, on the loan that you made to the Urban Renewal Commission was very, at a generous rate, but you still are earning more interest than you would otherwise in the local government investment pool, because rates are so low at this point. So it's kind of a win-win for both agencies.
Okay. And just so, for our viewing audience, we did have a very good discussion about this issue on the Urban Renewal meeting, so there was concerns brought up and addressed at that time. Mm-hmm. And just so, for our viewing audience, we did have a very good discussion about this issue on the urban renewal meeting. So, there was concerns brought up and addressed at that time.
Is that why I had to entertain a motion?
I move to approve.
Your discussion? Okay, I've got a motion from same people. Moved by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Mum, and unanimous vote. With that, take a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to approve. Second.
Commissioner Roth moved, Commissioner Mum seconded, and we have a unanimous vote. We'll go on into the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been providing some emails, but since we had some public comment tonight about this, I want to make sure I highlighted this point regarding the rate differential that Tri-City wants, Tri-City slash Clackamas County wants to charge Oregon City residents for a right-of-way fee passed through. The city attorney's done some preliminary research on that, and there is a way that they can do that, but there has to be a methodology that shows that it's not a district-wide benefit. We believe that since the mains and the right-of-way, which is most of what they are, not everything, but most of what's in there are mains that benefit the entire district, and but for those mains, the district wouldn't receive, some of our neighboring cities, in fact, would not receive sewer treatment. So, we think that they can do this, but they've got to provide a methodology. It appears that they did it without the methodology. So, the city attorney had talked to county council about this, asked the attorney to provide methodology. We didn't get methodology back. So, the city attorney is working on a letter. One of our city attorneys is working on a letter that we'll be sending to the county soon demanding that the methodology to meet the legal requirements for special rates imposed as what essentially appears like retaliation on Oregon City residents. If the methodology's not there, the increases are subject to challenge, and the city attorney will provide you legal options in future executive sessions on that issue.
Let's hope it doesn't get that far, but thank you for doing that.
And it's also interesting to note that there was quite a lot of publicity about some mismanagement of funds at Wes in the last two months, and the total figure for that exceeds $1.1 million. The amount of those losses appears to be being transferred on to the districts rather than to the county whose department it is that runs these districts. Now, I feel like when, as a member of the Tri-City Advisory Committee, I've asked many times, well, it's been explained to me that the Wes director, who actually was responsible for these things, is not an employee of the district. He's a contractor, employee of the county, who answers only to the county and to the county administrator, but he serves as a contractor who runs the district. So, to me, if the contractor makes a mistake when he's painting your house, or one of his employees make a mistake and there's a loss, the contractor absorbs that loss. It isn't passed on to you. He's not your employee.
Right.
If the person is our employee, so it seems like employee contractor hat goes on and off depending on who's supposed to pay the bill.
Yes.
So, I just think that's something to keep in mind and.
Can I wear to not pay my bills?
Well, and then, Mr. Mayby, he testified tonight on some things, and we're going to check into that T1 line, but you remember there was a pre-existing connection between our traffic signals and ODOT with the county that was exempt from all of this because it was not generating any profit, any revenues. The county is making profit and revenues off of these sewer rates, and they're using a right-of-way for that. Another thing that needs to be remembered when Mr. Mayby made his testimony is that it's not as if the city hasn't been charging its own water and sewer collection systems for, as far as I know, since Dave Wimmer was first hired here.
Yeah.
So, that goes back many times, so that isn't a new thing. It's just something that's more transparent now. And also, many of these new right-of-way users, in fact, the vast majority of them are not public entities, so it is somewhat optional. Some of these companies have little or no customers in the city. Even some of the public entities, like CRW, have very few customers in the city, but quite a few facilities. And as you remember, your scale has a graduated scale in there to qualify them for the minimum annual fee for that situation. So, the ordinance, I think LOC really tried to think of every possible eventuality. It wasn't just to pass on rates to customers and residents. It was also to capture revenue from companies that are incorporated out of state, who may not have hardly any customers here, but pass through our city. And because of our location, we have a lot of those. And so, we have leveled the playing field. The other benefit, of course, is that we've saved tens of thousands of dollars a year in both staff time and attorney's fees from the way the ordinance is administered now as opposed to the old franchise negotiations that we used to do that take years in some cases. So, there are, we didn't have a chance to brief Mr. Mayby on some of those things I would have liked to, but I do understand that from a distance here, you know, he's raising questions, and he's really good at that, and we appreciate that because that's the kind of individual that we like to have on our budget committee.
Absolutely.
So, also, moving on, John wants to give us a short update on the geologic hazard information, and before he does, he already approved me to say this. Within two weeks, we think the crosswalk up here at Singer Hill is going to be lighted and functional, right? So, that's been, yeah, the pedestrian crossing, and that's been a year in planning, but actually, I don't think it happened this way, but for me, it was really important to have our library bond approved, hopefully before that. So, because there will be, believe it or not, people, I think, that will complain about having to stop coming down the hill. And, you know, you could argue now that, well, the traffic, the pedestrian traffic isn't that great between the library and Singer Hill, but if you double the size of your library, you're going to double the possibility of somebody getting hurt. And then, if somebody gets hurt, they'll be in here the first thing saying, why didn't you do something? So, now we have, I think, a really good compelling trigger, reason triggering the installation of this crosswalk. So, thanks, John, for working on that. I really appreciate it.
Group effort, or it is a group effort. I did want to get back to you because this question came up, and Commissioner Roth, I think this is something that's of interest to you, which is the work that Bill Burns did on the landslide inventory, using some of the LiDAR mapping that had been done previously. They've built upon that with.
Is it SLIDAR or LiDAR?
LiDAR data.
It's not the SLIDAR data? There's a difference.
The SLIDAR data?
Yeah.
It's the LiDAR data that they've converted to SLIDAR data.
Yeah.
So, I haven't heard that. Is that how they're calling it?
The susceptibility stuff is called SLIDAR.
SLIDAR data.
There's the latest logo.
It's not listed that way here. So, anyway, it's, you know, this has come up in our meetings pretty regularly now and from citizens both inside and outside the city about how maybe the city isn't that attentive to geologic hazards. And so, David asked me to just kind of give you a quick report. First of all, this data, or that work that's been done, that more recent work on the SLIDAR data, is yet to be adopted by the state, but we are still using that data. We still use those maps and we still apply those maps, and when they are adopted, we will adopt them to our code as well. And so, I just want to mention that. But the other piece that's pretty important to me is, you know, we have reassessed our implementation of our geologic hazards codes, especially for some of those smaller subdivisions. The big ones get brought into that pretty regularly, and they're kind of, the developers are understanding that they need to do more to address geologic hazards. But some of the existing lots of record that are in those challenging areas, it always, our policy hasn't always been clear about what we're going to require of those. So, our city engineer and Tony and our, we've hired a third-party geotech to kind of help us create internal policies on how we deal with properties that are in those geologic hazard areas. And so, when those now come to us, even though there are a lot of record, we're still going through the same process that we, or something similar to what we would go through with a full-blown development, including hiring, requiring the applicant that they hire a geologist and a geotech possibly, depending on the complexity of the issue. We've got a nice checklist now that we use that might require a whole slew of things of that particular property owner to address the concern. And so, and in the end, the conditions get pretty extensive. So, without going into a bunch of detail, which we're not wanting to do tonight, I just wanted to report back and assure you that I think we're all over the geotechnical, or the geo-hazards code. I think we're implementing it more stringently than we have in the past, and I think for good reason a lot of places. So, it's going to cost us something, and in some cases, it may cost the developers. So, I know how lots of times this group is really concerned about development, whether or not it can happen, but in these cases where we've got geologic hazard concerns, it is going to cost that applicant more money to hire their own geotech, and it may cost us some money to hire a geotech of our own to do a third-party review of that. So, just be aware of that. If you'd like more details on that, I can email them to you. I can give you the tools that we're using in terms of process and checklist, but that's all I really wanted to say tonight.
Let me ask you a question. I'm a little concerned that if the state hasn't adopted those, so therefore, we haven't adopted them, that we're building our policy based on something that's not adopted. I mean, we may want to look at changing it soon if it doesn't get adopted.
So, with the new maps, the state will come out, kind of like what they've done with nature in the neighborhoods or natural resources, they'll come out with kind of a model code, and then they'll put a requirement that local jurisdictions, let's say, everything move forward, they would put a requirement that says, okay, you have X years to comply or show compliance with this. So, I think what John's saying is that in the interim, we have made quite a bit of progress in terms of the information that we use and the process that we use, and then once we see what the state comes up with, we'll compare what we have existing with what the requirements are, and then we'll begin that analysis of what needs to change, what needs to be adopted.
I'm just concerned that we're, because there is such a big difference between the LiDAR and the SLIDAR in these hazardous areas. There's a tremendous difference in some of them, that we're not going to be looking at that huge difference, and we'll be building our code to the LiDAR rather than something that's more accurate, in my opinion.
It's the same data. It's just how they've mapped that and used that data. It's the same.
Well, there is a little bit of difference because they're putting soil susceptibilities in there, so that wasn't in there before.
They're looking at soil susceptibilities. They're looking at number of properties.
Right. LiDAR did not look at soil susceptibility.
LiDAR looked specifically at slope stability.
Right.
Yeah. So, again, our overlays, the minute you're in one of those overlays, which all the SLIDAR areas of concern are in our overlays already, so we're already applying our same geologic hazard code and our new process to all those areas already. So, they still have to, I mean, with or without SLIDAR data, they still have to hire a geologist, do soil analysis, they may have to hire a geologist as well. So, I, I mean, I'm comfortable that we're well.
We're talking the same language right now.
Okay.
And I think whenever that new data becomes available, we will compare that to our code before we bring it back to you for any changes. Both of them.
Thank you for doing that, though. I appreciate it.
The consultants they hire are from a select list we provided for them, are they not?
Theirs aren't, but ours are.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
That's true. So, they don't necessarily have to hire off of our list. We've got a recommendation for that. And to be quite honest with you in some of these detailed, you know, they need to hire somebody who's not only a geotechnical engineer, but a geologist. Getting those in the same person requires a fair amount of qualification. So, you know, and the person that we hire has got both those qualifications. In fact, we've got, now got them on retainer.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. And last but not least, Concerts in the Park is beginning on July 10th, and it's that season again. It seems like it went by fast. I have the poster. I'm going to pass it around in case you want to mark your calendars for any of the events.
And we do not go to someplace, and we go to someplace else.
That's right. We no longer do it at the Carnegie. These are, these seven events will be at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. And thanks to Scott Archer for pulling all that together, he and his staff, and I think it'll be a bigger, better venue with, hopefully, it'll be well-attended. The parking is great and lots of it, and so, we're looking forward to a good turnout this year. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I've got a couple of things. I think I'll let Commissioner Polly speak to one of them. Our city manager and I met with our Senator, State Senator Olson, talking about some of the things that we would like to see, among them specifically were two things, the, and I'll mention one of them, and that is to see if the legislature itself in this next year can, in fact, put in its budget funds for the Falls Legacy Project. And have the funds that, the funds that we got, the $5 billion that we got from Myers Shore came on with the government's budget. He's seen extremely receptive to that. He is the, he's attended almost all, if not all, of our legacy partner meetings, so he's been actively involved in this process.
Mayor, can I add something to that? I just, just this evening, before your first meeting started, I had a few minutes on the phone with Representative Brett Barton, and I let him know about Senator Olson's desire to sponsor, perhaps sponsor that legislation, and Representative Barton sounded very enthusiastic about that, so I'm hoping that there'll be some bipartisanship that we benefit from.
And they've done a good job. People probably saw the letter to the editor that was jointly written in support of the library bond from Representative Barton and Representative Kenimer. They represent two different parties, two different districts, but I think we have great bipartisan representation in this particular area. We will actually later, I think this month, be meeting with Representative Barton. I also had the pleasure of handing out certificates to the high school construction class for their work over this past year. They ran into frustrations with our floodplain ordinance, which is one of the reasons they got slowed up on the building of the stage there at the end of the Trail Interpretive Center, but that is still, that's still on track. I pointed out that there are probably some benefits for their students learning about bureaucracies, and so, that was part of their learning experience as well. I have invited Mr. Tucker, what's Brett?
Brett.
Mr. Brett Tucker, who runs the construction class, to speak to us because they have many projects that the students do. Some of them are international in scope.
Oh.
And I was very excited. There were two of them discussed specifically at this presentation, and I have invited him to come and speak about the program they have in general.
Yeah.
The other piece, I think, we also, I'll let, let me start off by saying, the city manager was not able to attend a meeting that we had with State Representative Bill Kenimer, and I asked Commissioner Polly to join me because part of it had to do with the Falls Legacy Project funding. We brought up some concerns that there, that we fear there might be efforts in the next commission meeting. We brought this up with Senator Olson as well, and the next congressional session that there may be political entities that might want to alter the right-of-way capabilities that we have, and so, we wanted to express that concern that something like that might happen, and we talked about that as well. But I'll let Commissioner Polly speak more to that. And with that, I could start with Commissioner Polly.
Okay. We met with Bill Kenimer, and he understands the importance of the Loma Falls Legacy Project and very pleased to hear that there's broad state support for that. And we were able to explain a little bit about our row ordinance and why we have it for a level playing field. And his suggestion was to have the League of Oregon Cities and the League of Oregon Counties discuss the issue together. So, it was, you know, again, it was just, it's great to have partnerships with our friends at the state and just have them interested in our city and working together with us to try to troubleshoot some of these issues.
Very good. Commissioner Roth, do you have anything to report on?
Well, I have a question, and then I'm just reporting that I'm leaving town.
You're not even an Alcoa.
I don't know. My question is, well, first of all.
I was going to say, we don't rent chopsticks, but no, I couldn't.
Does anybody have anything they want? I am working on a speech in Japanese to present the picture, so I'm, no, it'll be very short, and I hope you let me come back after I do that.
Film it.
Oh, no, 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 no. We are also doing line dancing.
Oh, have them film it.
Yeah. So, I have a question about the train whistles in town. I don't know who to ask that of or.
or, I understand that if we have crossings, that makes it a quiet zone.
There are certain kinds of gates they could put forward, they're expensive, but yes, it's not the gates we have.
It's not just the, okay.
No, no, it's not the gates we have.
That's, that explains it. Thank you.
They've got, I think they got a couple of alternatives, one's called the, what is it, the horn on a stick or something like that, where it's an electric horn at the intersection itself, so it doesn't penetrate.
Eric, would you like to come in and talk to that?
No. No.
Yeah, we can do that later. I think the Urban Renewal Commission might be looking at seeing if we could fund something that would enable that to become a quiet zone, but our current, our current one does not work.
Okay, that was just a private question.
It also comes up a lot at Main Street, too, with the wanting the vertical housing down there, so that's, yeah.
It got into your work plan? We're just waiting for a viable development for vertical housing. We don't want to install it and spend that money until we know we have somebody who really wants to do it. And once that happens, then we're going to bring that forward to you, and I believe it was a couple hundred thousand dollars, and don't quote me on that, but it was in that range.
Yeah, or three hundred, but that, that's all right.
Yeah, a couple three.
It was a hundred there.
Couple three.
Is a couple three six hundred? I don't know. Anyway.
That's right.
It's a lot of money, but we have that.
Well, first of all, I wish you a good trip, and we'll report back to us.
Yes.
Yes. And we want a safe return as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Mum.
So I will also be leaving Saturday. I'm going to Boston for a conference for the Water Association, Water, yes, for South Fork, so I will not be at the work session on Tuesday, and the mayor will be representing us at the C4 meetings in the morning tomorrow and in the evening in my absence.
Commissioner Smith.
I'm not leaving town. I will say, I haven't attended any other meetings other than the ones we've all been at, Metro Enhancement, et cetera, but I will say that I did attend graduation and for Oregon City, which went really well, and grad party, all-night grad party, which was entertaining and fun, really fun, actually. So that was cool. So I just want to remind people that the seniors are out, and so you might see them driving around town. I was telling my current students, you know, when you have students for, I've been a teacher at Oregon City for 13 years, and you see students come in as freshmen and continue, and their sole mission is to leave that place. And then when they do, as we all know, they don't know where to go.
Yes.
And so my, you know, so you have these seniors that are, you know, running around town or trying to figure out what to do and where to go, and some of them come back to the high school to visit occasionally, which we don't always, you know, support, because it's just awkward, but, so that's, they're out around town, and then school is out for everyone next week, so drive safely when you see all the kids out. That's it.
Thank you. Was that anything else for the...